So I will, I will start it. The purpose of the briefing is twofold. One, it's to inform the board as to the feedback that we got from the stakeholder engagement for considering a South County transfer station, the services that our community would be interested in, in addition to what we're already providing there. And then also to seek approval from the board to move forward with a site, a siting study for a South County transfer station. So back in 2019, we did a solid waste facility condition assessment that was conducted by HDR. And out of that assessment, there were improvements that were identified for both our current transportation at the WARC, but also Rainier and Rochester Dropbox facilities. The preliminary cost associated with the upgrades at Rainier and Rochester were approximately 7.1 million. We, just as background again, those two Dropbox facilities do not have scales. So when customers come in, our staff are using yardsticks to measure the loads there and doing calculations that way, as opposed to at the transfer station up in Lacey at the WARC, where we actually have scale. So we're measuring or weighing when they come in and then weighing when they go out. So 7.1 million, we had budgeted for the upgrades. We then did a, when we were looking at, okay, well, what would be the cost of a new South County transfer station? And we looked at those costs and they were like 11 to 12 million dollars approximately. And looking at that and how close they were and doing an initial just feasibility as to other locations of a South County transfer station, we said, okay, well, let's take a step back because the costs, you know, they're not ideal the way the two sites are laid out now. So let's take a step back. Let's look at, okay, what would that look like for a South County transfer station? Because we know that area is growing. And so looking at that, we did a stakeholder engagement, asking the community what they would be interested in, how far they would be willing to drive, that type of thing. And so we're going to go through, Wendy's going to go through the details of that study and what we found. And then wrapping it up with, again, the getting the board's permission to move forward. Although we have budget authority for it, we just want to make sure that the board is still interested in us exploring a South County facility. So with that, I will kick it over to Wendy Mifflin, who has been working with us. Wendy's with HDR. She's been working with us for the last four or five years. Actually, maybe a little bit longer with our solid waste facilities. And as you know, has an extensive background in solid waste managing facilities. So Wendy, I'll kick it over to you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Good morning, everyone. So next slide, please.
Hang on, county manager has a question.
I have a question for maybe Jennifer or you. Are you going to touch base on the alternatives? Meaning one is they do nothing, right? The other one is just to upgrade the current locations. And the next alternative is what you will present today. Is that part of the presentation or?
No, but we can talk about that at the end.
Because I think those are options for the board. Okay, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Wendy.
Next slide, please. So just a little bit of background. The county and HDR partnered to engage the local community in the south portion of your county in a conversation about the potential for citing a new transfer station. And we had a number of goals and objectives when we went into the study. First of all, the county wanted to raise awareness of the problems with the current Dropbox sites and demonstrate that a potential solution may be needed in that area to accommodate the growing population and waste stream coming out of your southern portion of Thurston County. We also wanted to provide clear and concise messaging to the community, make sure they had a chance to provide feedback to the county through a process with thoughtful consideration of options and trade offs. And then build potential momentum for additional public engagement opportunities as the project potentially moves forward. And then build community ownership of the project. So with that being said, we did a stakeholder engagement project with the objective to obtain community feedback on the future of those Dropbox sites. And we did a number of engagement options as part of the project. We did, and I'll talk to those a little bit more in depth when we get back in, but just to go over those, we did some intercept surveys, both at Rainier and Rochester Dropbox sites and then also through online survey. The county conducted in-person informational tables at a number of community events over this, in the summer of 2022. We did a virtual public meeting to allow the public to come in, listen to a presentation and ask questions. We did some direct mailings and a paid online ad. And then we also did some stakeholder engagement with the Curbside Holler Waste Connections with your operating contract, Republic Services, and also with your neighboring county, Lewis County. So next slide, please. Can you, there we go. So we conducted intercept surveys. And let me tell you a little bit about that. HDR had employees at both the Rainier and Rochester Dropbox sites on a Friday and a Saturday in, I think it was in July. We surveyed, we, we'd got 168 intercept surveys at those two sites. And then we also did 247 online surveys. So for a total of 415 customer surveys, just in the month of July. We asked a number of questions during those engagement surveys. We wanted to ask, you know, are you a commercial hauler? Which would mean, you know, a private company commercially hauling for pay? Or are you a self hauler, like a homeowner? What current services of the site do you use? So we wanted to know, was recycling important? Was garbage disposal important? You know, what did they want to look at there? We also asked them what they liked about the services that were offered? And then what additional services they would like to see? We asked questions about how far did you travel to the site? How far are you willing to travel? And then we also looked at what potential things would you like to see if the county were to construct a potential new site with a transfer station facility? We also received email information from almost everyone that we did an intercept survey on so that they could receive future updates on the project. Next slide, please. So with that, the surveys that we did, we had some really great results. Lots of comments, lots of clear cut survey results. Eighty-four percent of those 415 that we surveyed were residential self haul customers. And 57% of those subscribed to Curbside Collection Services, which I think is a fairly high percentage if they were using those Dropbox sites. I think that tells you that not only were they getting, disposing of residential waste at the curb, but they also had bulky materials and recycling materials that they needed to bring into those sites. Another interesting thing out of the survey was that 58% traveled to the WARC for recycling and disposal services. And with that, some of that was for disposal of household hazardous waste and then additional recycling type options that you don't accept at your Dropbox sites, such as organics, tires, some of, some of those type of items. Then we also looked at what they typically use the sites for. And of course, that was recycling, household garbage and bulky item disposal. And then another one of the questions that we asked, what additional services would you like to see in the southern portion of the county? And in order of ranking, they wanted to look at the ability to bring organics to a site, household hazardous waste, tires and appliances. Next slide, please. So a little bit about our survey. When we talk about where, what the respondents would prefer, they would like to see seven day per week availability to a site currently. You don't offer that in the lower county. You have some limited hours of operation for Rainier and Rochester. And then they would also be able, be willing to travel to a site. We thought that was interesting as well. Sixty-eight, 62% would be willing to travel up to 10 miles to a site. And 38% would be willing to travel between 11 and 20 miles. And you could see from the illustration on this slide how we broke out the survey questions, the response. And then we had them broken out whether they were a Rainier intercept survey, a Rochester, an online. And then we gave the county combined survey responses. Next slide, please. We also talked to the Curbside Collection Company that operates in Thurston County, Waste Connections. Jeff and I had a very good conversation with them and they were very forthcoming about information and providing us information. So we asked them to give us an estimate of how many tons per day average they thought that they would bring to the facility if a transfer state was built. And they estimated probably 80 tons per day, which is a pretty good average coming out of that area, which rounds out to about 20,800 tons per year, which would also provide some relief to the volume that's processed at the WARC. They thought that a facility location near Tonino would best accommodate their haul routes and not necessarily in Tonino, but somewhere around that area because they haul from both sides of I-5 down there and do collection. And currently, all that material that they collect down there at the curb is hauled up to the WARC. They would like early morning access to the facility through RFID cards. And they also recommended that the county consider upsizing the facility, not only to allow for population and tonnage growth, but also look at what happens when the WARC has an outage and how municipal solid waste could be handled from curbside collection routes due to those operating issues that have happened from time to time at the WARC. Next slide, please. We also talked to your current contractor, Republic Services, to gather feedback from them as to what they would like to see operationally in that portion of the county. And of course, they would like easy access to the truck routes in the I-5 corridor. They felt that that would save the county quite a bit of money. Well, for two reasons. One, that they wouldn't have to haul the small Dropbox's from the Dropbox site up to the WARC for processing. And then once that material is processed at the WARC, haul it back down to the rail to go to the landfill. So they were really excited about the potential of a transfer station in the South County. They would like to see seven day a week operations. That's normal for them, working 10 hour shifts for their employees. So they didn't have any problem with seven day a week operations. They did note that additional operational equipment would be needed, which would be an added cost, but that that cost could be offset by the current haul of the Dropbox loads to the WARC. And then we talked about how they might handle organics down there if that option was chosen. And they did not want to provide for grinding onsite at a second site. I think because the cost for the operational equipment for a grinder is so high. I believe grinders now are running about 1.8 million. So they would propose that if a transfer station is built, organics would be transloaded and transported to the WARC for processing and then on to the composting facility. And they would also transload recyclables onsite and direct haul those to the material recovery facility, which is located in Seattle. Next slide, please. Jeff and I also talked to Lewis County. We had a meeting with their solid waste manager and their recycling coordinator. We talked about their Centralia transfer station, noting that that facility has traffic and operational issues, sometimes pretty severely. They have a lot of traffic backup into that facility on weekends. At this time, they are not interested in working with the county for a potential new transfer station facility that would service both Lewis and Thurston County. They felt that that was currently unlikely. And then we also asked them, do they keep a record of customer accounts that come into their facilities for customers from Lewis County? Because they have made statements that they're getting a lot of Thurston County constituents using those facilities. And they noted that they do not keep a record of those customers. So we couldn't really get any operational information from them regarding customers in the South County. And with that, I'm turning it over to Jeff.
Next slide. So yes, so in this process, we've had our SWAC involved quite extensively. So initially, as when HDR, they prepared a plan, an engagement plan. We actually ran the engagement plan past our SWAC and they actually had some, some good feedback and we made some edits based upon that. So they, they were engaged and commented on the plan prior to actually starting up the work. Additionally, they made a number of suggestions for additional like engagement events out in the community and other activities that were, ended up being incorporated into the work that was actually accomplished. After that, I know we had a number of them that participated in the online, online participation event that we had in late July. And the final report that was prepared by Wendy and HDR was brought forth before the SWAC, I think it was in September of last year, which they reviewed and basically culmination of all that work and with involvement of SWAC. At their October meeting, they actually passed a recommendation to the board, county commissioners, recommending that we move forward with the next step, which would be looking at a, performing a siting study to identify potential locations. So SWAC has passed a motion, made a recommendation to the board that we move forward with the next step in the process. And next slide. So this is kind of an overview of the next steps. Assuming that we're, that board is in agreement would be to, again, this is mentioned previously, move forward with performing a siting study. This is kind of, what's, you'll see here is a draft schedule of what this would look like if we did move forward. You know, if we were to potentially take this to completion, this idea, it's a good solid five year minimum process, assuming no major snafus or snags to get to that point. So the first piece would be, you know, siting study and eventually getting down to a site and settling on one, getting there. There then, you know, additional stakeholder engagement. Be hiring, you know, getting a preliminary design on that property, going through the permitting process. SIPA, you know, we'll probably have a gophers down there, I'm sure. So a lot to deal with, things like that. Then getting a final design, bidding, construction. It's, it's a long process to get there. That's very typical, but it's kind of one that just show what that would tend to look like if we were to continue to move forward. And basically with that, questions?
Commissioners, pipe up because I can't see you. I'll start with Commissioner Edwards.
Okay, can you hear me okay? What are the hours of operation? The folks that were surveyed wanted 24, not 24 hours, seven days a week. So what are we at, what are our hours actually down there at both sites?
Currently, they're, we'll, we'll start with Rainier is open on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and it's from nine till five. Rochester is open on Tuesday, Saturday and Sunday, same hours, nine to five. So it's.
Well, okay, well, what would, wouldn't this be doable? I mean, if we had more hours available. I realize the yardstick issue is a problem, but if we just expanded the hours, why wouldn't that meet the community's needs?
So currently, Rainier in 2021 had 25,000 customers and brought in 4,300 tons. And then Rochester, we had 20,000 customers and 3,400 tons. We saw a 67% increase in customer transactions and tonnage from 2020 to 2021. And then a 13% increase from 20 to 2021 in Rochester. So right now, with the growth and the capacity that we have for throughput at those facilities, we are challenged with meeting current needs, let alone the future growth that's happening in that area. So even if we, because originally, when we were looking at doing the upgrades, we were thinking the same thing, Commissioner Edwards. Let's just add, increase our throughput there by adding scales to the facility. So it doesn't take as long, people don't have to back up. But when we looked at the growth that was happening, even with the scales, we weren't going to, we weren't going to be able to accommodate the growth that was happening.
Even if you had seven day a week coverage?
I think we would still run into peaks and valleys, even, even with the seven days a week. And then we're looking at the staffing of that, but yes.
Is it fair to say that perhaps the demand for the south stations are mainly on, on the weekends?
They are the greatest, yes. Saturday, Sunday are definitely.
So perhaps sitting another days will not help us because they actually throughput and the capacity is on the, on the weekends for the most part. Would that be a fair conclusion?
I think so. I think it's also, that's what we're actually operating as well. So, you know, we have one day a week that it's during the, the week. So you could say, well, we have capacity on Saturday and Sunday because that's when we're open. So I want to be, yeah.
Okay, but I guess I was under the, I guess I misunderstood. Initially, I thought that these remote transfer stations were open more than what you're saying they're open. And I, I think that if we're going to move ahead with something, if the need is there, we ought to at least expand the hours because the, before we move ahead. And the reason I say that is so we could get a good handle on what people are really bringing and when, and see how that pencils out in comparison to what we're doing now. So I, I'm going to just, I'll probably have more questions as we go along, but that's it for me right now. Thanks.
Can you show me here?
Yes, thank you. My question is, are there already potential sites that are being considered?
No.
Okay.
We did a, an initial feasibility just to see is there, are there, is there even area available for us? If we were looking at doing a South County, but there's nothing that's being considered. That's what the site assessment would do.
Okay, thank you.
As a follow up on that, so is there? So Waste Connections said Tonino's best central point. I could see how that would serve the customers well. Republic's saying Grand Mound's the best because you've got access to the I-5. So that helps on the backend, reduce cost. Is there any synergy between what this would do and what Tonino, I know Tonino's got plans to upgrade and maybe, I'm thinking of maybe wastewater.
Wastewater.
So they, so that has nothing to do with anything Tonino's doing. So, okay, so in terms of this siting then?
We'd also be looking at where is the projected population growth? And the projected population growth would.
For South County?
Is, is more in that Yelm area, Yelm. I mean, that's the, that's the biggest when I think of the heat map.
So Tonino is probably a good compromise.
Well, what I would say is that's why we do a site assessment. That's why we do a siting because, yeah, it's not going to be one thing. I would add to that. I would be remiss if I didn't talk about some safety elements that exist right now or challenges with safety, the way that the current Dropbox locations are situated and the way that customers have to come in, turn around and back up into it, and especially if they have trailers and we have staff that are out there. So doing nothing from my perspective, I think, I think would be doing a disservice to the community.
And there's also traffic pattern issues in the community surrounding it because of volumes.
I'll get to you, county manager. You alluded to this, but what would be? So I guess what I'm wondering is, would this investment have a meaningful impact on the WARC's like future, you know, its capacity over time? And really, you know what I'm saying? Like would it, would it really, is it just, you know, it would help out here and there? Or is it really going to like divert enough tonnage that it, you know, helps us expand the life of the work or not need investments in upgrades, you know, 20 years from now because now we're dividing a significant amount of, I don't know what the numbers look like if this is really something that we would want to think about? Or is that kind of more negligible to this, to this analysis?
No, I mean, I think if you look at the numbers and the percentage of people that driving up to the WARC and then you also look at another fast growing area is, is that north, that north county or Lacey area. I mean, the population growth there and the volumes. So we know we're needing to do something with the WARC reconfiguration as well. I would also add that it's also adding additional services that don't exist right now down in South County.
That was my next question, so can you outline that?
Yeah, Jeff, you want to go through the specific?
Sure, so some of the things, I think Wendy had kind of touched on that is some of the things that we don't allow for or don't have available down in South County is, for example, organics, yard debris, food waste. If you're in South County and you go to one of our Dropbox, it goes as garbage. Because we don't have the, we're on little, small five acre lots for both of those two Dropbox sites, very small. Don't have room to expand sideways to do, add additional services. So for folks that would like to have their yard debris composted, they have to haul it up to the WARC. Additionally, we don't provide for appliance or tire recycling because we don't have spaces for those boxes. Again, individuals that have those have to drive up to the WARC. There's one more, it was.
Household hazardous waste.
Oh, yes, yeah, thank you, Wendy. Yeah, we would want to provide, we would be able to provide some, not to the level of household house, but a, a lower level of household hazardous waste collection such as latex paint to go into the, you know, the paint program and some other items that, again, individuals that have those have to drive all the way up to the WARC to get that service. So it would definitely be providing a significant additional services as well as divert, for example, with the yard debris, diverting that out of the waste stream. Particularly important now with the HB 1799 that was passed this year. And us having a goal of reducing our, our organics that are going into a landfill.
I think it would also contribute to the, the goals of the county in terms of our climate mitigation. I think it would also um contribute to the, the goals of the county in terms of uh our climate mitigation.
County Manager and then Commissioner Edwards. Go ahead, County Manager.
Yeah, I, I, I think but um the, the, the whole discussion has been on, um you know, the, obviously the, the capacity that we don't have in the south county. I mean, the throughput, even if perhaps we add additional hours, the amount of garbage is still gonna be an issue down the road. But also I believe is, uh, and you touched a little bit on the, what I call the operational benefits of a new facility. And the operational benefits, adding the services you just described. Operational benefits in terms of not having to haul all the solid waste to the work and just having a, a, an operational self-contained that we can haul it down to the rail station in Lewis County. Or having a self-contained facility that can bring organics and hazardous waste. So I think uh, uh, the, the value and, and the long-term value, at least from my humble point of view, is the operational value that brings this facility, potential new location by consolidating into a single one. Um and intuitively, I believe there is gonna uh create additional capacity at the work. Because you're not, we are not gonna be bringing all the solid waste generated in the areas of the south county to the work to process it. So intuitive, intuitively, yeah, it will be adding additional capacity that will help us to uh increase the capacity at the, at the, at the work. That's just probably my, my thoughts. I do have a question on the, on the um schedule. Um and you have um everything lined out, um but I don't see the site acquisition in the land acquisition in that schedule. And that, I know that your director knows exactly how long it takes to acquire a property. So um, so where, I wonder where in that schedule is the site acquisition?
That, that would just extend the schedule. Uh, so is that, there's opposition to that, I'm sorry, uh, opposition to that would be, would extend that. And if it's a, if difficult acquisition, that would extend it as well.
But I believe that is a key element uh to make this project successful. So I think we need to add on the schedule to have a realistic perspective when this could happen.
Sure.
Sure.
Uh Commissioner Edwards?
I, yes, I, I'm curious, Jennifer said do nothing is not really an option, which I, I tend to agree with, but does do nothing include not expanding the hours?
That would include not expanding the hours. We could add a fourth alternative, which we, be to expand the hours and then um add staff to support that expansion. Cause we wouldn't have the staffing to be able to um expand based off of current staffing levels. But that, you, you know, certainly would,
and contractual, contractual um responsibilities associated with that, keeping in mind, it's not just our county staff, but it's our operations. And I mean, the operations down there are not um very efficient and effective.
Well, they're not ideal. They're small, top.
For us and for, for, yeah.
They're top loaders. Um it's not compacted, so people are just tossing over into an open container. Those containers are then picked up by our contractor and driven up to the work. That material's then tipped onto the floor and then put in to the compactor, then put on to um, um chassis and then trucked back down. So operationally, um it wouldn't be able to happen overnight. We'd have to negotiate. Um we probably, we'd have to have a conversation with Republic because that contract is starting on May first, so we're working on the transition of that new contract starting. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Edwards?
Well, well, uh roughly it does. I mean, my concern is that we're moving ahead with a heck of an expenditure when maybe we haven't explored enough of the options. And that's where I'm coming from on, on the hours. It sounds like, uh, you know, what are we there, eight or ten hours a day? Five, potentially, uh, what, two days a week at each site or three days a week?
Yeah. Well, you know, another, certainly that could be something that we could evaluate. We could have an evaluation of what would it look like to, uh, wha- what is the potential cost with the contractor and then their ability to be able to do that because that's gonna require additional um operations for them, additional equipment, um routes that, that they weren't originally built into what they were going to be doing.
But in, in, if, if you are the two uh locations, we have six-day services to South County residents.
Yes, that is true.
And, and.
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have six days.
Six days of service.
Two days that overlap.
Right, two days they overlaps, but uh really is, 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 is six days the South County residents don't have to travel to the work.
But it, but it's less than half the potential time that they were asking for as far as, you know, if, if people are saying, well, why, how come we can't have seven days a week? I actually thought we were utilizing those South County services more, so we had a com- a real comparison. We have a, a shot in the dark now on those days. We don't know if the public has become accustomed to only coming on certain days. How would that affect if they did have other options? And uh, uh maybe a follow-up, I didn't really understand the organics activity portion of this. And then it was mentioned that something ends up being hauled to Seattle. And what I'm wondering about is maybe some clarification there on how that process works. Uh apparently folks did talk to Lewis County and see if there was any room for working together on issues. But what about on organics? If we just uh looked at organics uh standalone from other garbage? Would there be any potential of, of partnering the, with them to handle the organics end of things to make it, cause, to make it more feasible for one group to have enough organic material to make it work versus uh two operations basically with not enough organics. And then whatever we're doing, shuffling it around and grinding where and such. And then ending up, I didn't get the, I didn't really understand the going to Seattle part.
I don't know about the going to Seattle, but what I would say is that the two existing Dropbox locations as they are right now do not, are not configured to be able to process organics and and improvements would have to be made in order for that to happen. And then negotiations with our consultant will, would have to be had in order for that to occur.
Okay, but somebody said something and I'll, maybe it was Wendy, I'm not sure. Somebody said something and, and then it ends up in Seattle.
So, so Gary, let me address some of your concerns, um because I hear your concerns loud and clear. So the two sites are currently having not only operational issues, but safety issues as well. And those are not only for customers, but that's for your operating staff there on site. And so that's one of the reasons why the county is looking at going to an upgraded, more safe operational um situation for the lower county. So let's talk about the operational issues at the sites. Um you have customers coming in to the sites, as Jennifer said, depositing their garbage in a small forty-yard Dropbox container, similar to what the recycling containers are at the work if you've been in there. They hold very little tonnage, uh probably averaging three, four ton. That material is hauled up the I-five corridor to the work, put on the tipping floor at a cost, compacted at a cost, and then re-trucked back down to Chehalis to the intermodal. So all of that is additional cost. All of that is safety issues for multiple handlings of municipal solid waste. So, you know, from a county safety perspective, you would really like to get away from that if you can. Operationally, you're having operational issues at those sites because of their size. If you go in there on a weekend, and that's not gonna change, I don't think, if you, if you expand operations during the week, because most people like using those sites on the weekend, that's when they're off from work. You have people lined up at your recycling areas trying to drop off recyclables. You have people lined up depositing garbage. That, those lines are going back out onto the road. That's, that's a safety issue that's, you know, gonna be a liability for the county in the future. You have operational costs for operating those sites the way you are because you're only handling small material loads, which is huge cost when you talk about trucking that up to the work. And then servicing the community's needs. You know, the county needs to look at how you service community needs down there because, and, and saving money to the community is also a good thing. There's a potential to save money to those participating in curbside as well because currently the curbside collection gets picked up down there and then trucked back to the work at a cost. So these are all items, you know, that the county has been looking at over the last two to three years and how to, to handle that. In addition, you're not handling organics down there. All of that's going into the garbage, which is really not in compliance with your plan. You would like to have organics out of that waste stream. You don't have room to segregate organics on either one of those sites. The other issue is household hazardous waste. All of that's going into the garbage, tires going into the garbage. You don't have room to segregate anything for recycling down at those sites. So, you know, I think those are all things that the county has to consider when they look at what their long-term plan is for handling waste in that end of the county. Just my thoughts.
O- okay, uh but that, did we talk to Lewis County about the organics issue? Maybe a consolidated position?
They are having as much trouble with organics as you are. They don't have room in their Centaria transfer station to accept any additional waste. And you would be violating your contracts if you tried to work with, well, you would have to negotiate with your contractor because right now your contract has organics to go through in May through Republic Services and then go to the facility. Uh I can't remember what the name of the facility is that you're going to.
Brady, Brady Truck.
Brady, there you go. You your, your operating contractor, you have a contract with them to handle materials. I, I think that it would not be prudent to try to negotiate with Lewis County to handle organics separately. I mean, your first, your first line should be negotiating with your current contractor. And then on top of that, Lewis County, uh they have enough problems handling their waste at their Centaria transfer station without taking on something from Thurston County.
O- okay, I mean, that's, I don't understand the business good enough to know whether that's kind of a yea or nay. Maybe if, for whatever reason, we couldn't take it elsewhere, maybe Lewis County would uh come to a location that we put together for our, our organics. I don't, I don't know the answer to all that.
So Lewis County is contracted with Waste Connections and their organics are handled either through their contract with Waste Connections or they're going through a separate contract for land application. That's the last I knew about that county and their handling of um organics.
Okay, I mean, we, we had a, somehow or other it didn't work out, but we've got a, I guess it's organics, uh right there at Silver, Silver Creek on Waldrick Road, I think it is, that we're not utilizing anymore. So I, I don't know how that all fits. Uh but what was said about Seattle? I haven't heard.
So under your new, under your new contract, um recyclables will go, currently go to the work, go on to the tipping floor, be compacted in um a fifty-two yard, fifty-two foot um transfer trailer. And they will go up to Republic's recycling um Murph in Seattle.
Oh, okay, I mean, uh when we talk about carbon footprint, it sounds like there's an awful lot of running around. Whether or not it's necessary, not, it very well might be necessary. I don't know. But I think I'm wondering, like you talk about safety, have we got some issues where there was, people got hurt or accidents or, I realize planning for the future is, you know, well worth uh looking into. But I'm wondering about maybe simpler solution might be to expand the site. So a a truck had a spot to turn around. I don't know if the county's uh site is large enough to do that at either one of the locations that we have now. But have we at least looked at some of those options? I, I'm, I'm not against doing any of the above that's been uh proposed. I just wanna make darn sure we've covered every option to, in the end, benefit the ratepayers. So that's, that's kinda where I'm coming from. I'm not, not opposed to anything. I'm just saying I'm here, I'm hearing quite a few things here that, well, maybe we haven't done this or, well, we'd have to look at that, then we could get back to you on this or that. Well, uh when we make million-dollar decisions, I would like to know a little more. I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to, to uh cause trouble. I mean, I know even when we went to the contract with the new outfit, I, I was asking a lot of questions because I wanted those questions answered before I'll vote in the affirmative to do something like that. And in the end, I think we ended up with a contractor that even the opposition bidder said, well, heck yeah, you'd be fools not to move forward with that, you know? And that's, that's how good I want the uh answers to be to where that ends up being, being the answer from the decision-makers. Like, oh yeah, this is a no-brainer. We need to do this. Well, to make that no-brainer decision, I think I need some more answers. That's all, that's where I'm coming from here. And I, and I know in this amount of time, this isn't the best environment maybe to do that and uh you know, I maybe I can bug Jeff a little bit or got some time on my own to get some more answers if my seatmates, you know, unless they, my seatmates are interested in hearing a little more about this at a later date when there are more, more answers available. Okay, that's kinda where I'm at on this. Thank you.
Wendy, could you give a little bit of information? We, to Commissioner Edwards, to your point, we did do a lot of background in looking at the current sites and talking about what a expanded configuration would be to address some of the issues, aside from the additional services which we can't provide because of space. We went through quite a process to do some preliminary designs on those. And Wendy, can you talk a little bit about some of the challenges that we found? I mean, the, the outcome of those, uh that analysis is why we're here today talking about a, a transfer station, second transfer station as opposed to those upgrades into those sites.
Um yes, so we originally, when HDR was originally retained by the county to look at those sites, um trying to think twenty nineteen, twenty twenty? That's what we, we originally looked at. Um we looked at the possibility of how those sites could be expanded to handle the additional customers and tonnage that we knew were probably gonna be coming. Um we estimated what that additional tonnage and customer base would, would be. Um we looked at options for the county, whether it be expansion of the current sites to handle that um or whether that would be a new site such as a transfer station. I think the county hired a different contractor, a different engineering firm to look at um potential expansion coming out of those studies. Um and we looked at costs and how that might come about and kinda determined that it really wasn't feasible due to the size of those sites and the amount of construction that would need to take place in order to expand the cost for doing that. And then it didn't change operationally any of your operations. You, you, those sites cannot be expanded to put in the fifty-two foot transfer trailers that is, are what you really need at those sites as, as um tonnages go up. You know, you don't have scales at those sites, so we know. You know, you don't have scales at those sites, so we know that there were some potential items of concern with. Uh, the material tonnage coming in versus what was going out of the facilities. Um, we looked at traffic flow and the safety issues at those sites, I believe. So uh, correct me if I'm missing anything, Karen.
No, I that that's right. And so what we've, what we determined was there was a huge price tag associated with. Any potential upgrades to those sites and they really didn't achieve what we needed them to achieve in terms of that safety. Volume, um impact on, you know, the trucking or the moving back and forth of the. Um, waste and those additional services. So that's when we sort of pivoted, took a step back, like Jennifer said at the beginning of this. Briefing, which was, hey, perhaps there's a better path forward and let's look at a transfer station in South County. So that's kind of the full circle as to how we ended up here.
Commissioner McHear, anything? Make sure I didn't leave you off.
Uh, nope, uh but I do see Commissioner Edwards hands up.
Yeah, I got county manager first and then I'll go back to Commissioner.
Yeah, uh, thank you, um. The uh the request uh from the staff to the board right now is very narrow. And uh narrow in terms of taking this step to identify a site. The staff is not requesting the board to commit to building a new transfer station at this point. And I believe the the board should consider uh providing that guidance at this point. To do a feasibility study to determine what a possible location will be. And at that point will be a another conversation with the board as to how much the the cost of the acquisition will be for that site. And also at that point may be a good opportunity to bring all the elements. A little more in detail as to what the constraints that we have on the two current facilities. I think Wendy verbalized very well that study has been done, but I think in a follow up briefing where we have a a potential new location for the transfer station. And then look at the operational constraints that we have. So we have an overall briefing at that time. I think it will be uh extremely helpful, but I just want to remind the board at this point. The staff is not asking you to commit to a full transfer station is to. Get that to a a lower level detail to identify what the siding of this potential location will be. And then other steps in the decision making process for the board will.
So can, I'm just gonna jump in there, so. What, if we say thumbs up, what's, is there a cost associated? I mean, what is the siding study involved?
That's a good question.
Who's doing it and how much does it cost?
Um, it's HDR, okay, would be doing it and it'd be less than fifty thousand dollars to do this initial siding study.
Commissioner Edwards, saw your hand.
Uh, uh, yes, I guess. My concern is there's still some unknowns and that. The expansion of the site, I mean, that's one thing, but maybe the expansion of the site wouldn't be. As big a issue, especially when we compare it to safety. I don't know that we've had any instances. We've got potential problems, I can see that. But if we don't expand our hours to get a true picture of usage compared to. Who might be taking things up to the work instead if the if. These South County sites were open longer. How many would use that? That's that's so far my biggest bugaboo on this is. Moving ahead without uh potentially analyzing reality. And the reality is if the sites were open rather than speculation if the sites were open. And what the patterns of the users might might truly be, so. Uh, that's my concern, I'm, I just don't think we're there yet. Cause we're gonna try to assess things that maybe we don't even have a need for. I I I don't know that, but I'm just. That's a sh- kind of a shot in the dark for me, so other than that, uh I'll probably bug, I'll probably end up bugging Jeff a bit or Jennifer. Someone, thanks.
So just so I'm clear. From what I thought I understood you guys saying in response to Commissioner Edwards proposal, sounds like he's proposing like a. A pilot where you oh expand the hours and see what happens, but as I understood, that would require us to both. Hire a bunch more staff and negotiate amendments to the contracts with the people that are.
That is correct.
That's not an easy thing to 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 do.
No, and and I I would add that it's, we're still going to have to do some assessment. And make some projections because the area is growing. So even if we look at what's that volume and where people are going right now, and let's say it takes us a year. Um, to negotiate, add more staff. It's still going to be projections that we do out into the future because of the growth.
Is that Commissioner Edwards, is that, are 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 you tracking on that? I mean, is that, or is that not a concern you'd still like to?
Well, yeah, I I understand the restrictions that may be in place to do something, but. I really thought that we were, we had more expanded hours than we have, I guess. That's, I don't know, maybe it was five days a week or. I I really don't know. I don't, I don't use it. I have curbside service myself. And I do go to the work once in a while, so I just, I'm afraid. We're jumping ahead a little more than we need to without. Uh, really having a total real picture about what's going on. I'm not saying all these other issues aren't important issues. I think they are, but I don't, I don't know about this whole expansion of hours. How, how we can uh say, well, that isn't, that isn't worth pursuing. I. I'm just not there yet, so thank you.
Okay, so we're out of time. Last question from anyone?
So uh there's a, there, yeah, there's a a a decision the staff is asking for the board. And again, I'd like to remind the board it's a very narrow uh decision that you need to make, um they ask you to make. Is to authorize the department to move forward with just with the feasibility study of the siding. And again, you're not committed to purchase the site, you're not committed to building the transfer station, it's just to narrow down as to where a potential new location will be. It also, I I uh and hearing to Commissioner Edwards stating, I think the staff can also work as to what it will take. Uh, in terms of the cost and time to renegotiate with the contractor, expanded hours of operations on on the two sites. I think we can probably move forward on those two elements, if I may. And then come back with a later, uh later on a briefing, they will talk about all that. And uh and at that point you will have a a more much clearer uh uh understanding as to where this potential site will be. How much it will cost to negotiate expanded hours at the south locations. But I think at this point, if if with all due respect, if we don't, if we stop everything to go and explore for another months. How much it will cost us to expand the, expand the hours of operation, the south locations. I think we're gonna miss an opportunity to narrow down the site location, uh if I may. That would be my proposal.
Okay, so you want commissioners to give a thumbs up to this proposal of moving forward on the siding.
Just the side study, and you heard there's less than fifty thousand and and we'll come back with more information because this is not the. The last briefing.
Commissioner McHear, where, are you in support or not?
So I'm I'm in support of uh Romero's proposal of doing that two track of um. Getting answers to Commissioner Edwards' questions as well as uh moving forward with this side study.
Okay, Commissioner Edwards?
Yeah, I'll go along with the the chair there.
Um, I I I support as well, um I want to go back to the, I go back to where we started, which was that. In addition to all these operational elements that have been brought out in this good discussion. There's seven point one million dollars of capital, if I could call it that. Expense that would be needed to expand those drop off locations, which is why, as you said at the beginning. That was the original plan, but you saw that price tag and it's like, well, holy cow, if we could, we could actually.
Commissioner, uh Commissioner Minister?
Yeah.
Your audio is coming in and out.
Okay, I don't know what to do about that, because I'm just sitting in the middle of this room. Um, okay, so I was just saying that, um, going back to the beginning, it was kind of, we've been talking about all the operational. Uh, challenges and expenses involved in expanding the drop box hours and and that we can't expand services. There's also the whole point where we started, which was seven point one million dollars of expense of. Capital expense, I'll call it, to to do what's needed to make the drop boxes areas better or bigger or, you know, updated. And that's where we started to think that's not a good expenditure when we could expand service and consolidate and provide more service to the community. I've heard nothing but enthusiasm from South County residents that I've talked to about the possibility of the county making this type of investment, so. Um, I definitely want to see, you know, move forward with this modest expenditure to see where that might land and. And what the possibilities are, because I think it could re- be a real benefit. All the other things that we're, that we're looking at accommodating, so three thumbs up, sounds like you got.
Thank you, thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything else, commissioners, before we adjourn?
Nope, not on my part, thank you.
Okay, very good.
No questions for me. Okay, thank you.